Put that on the application.
Okay, it's 4:30. Can't. You ready? Mr. Stevens? Good afternoon. Welcome to a special council meeting for the city of Bella Vista for Monday, October the 19th. We'll start, please, with attendance.
All right. Councilmember Flynn?
Here.
Lozniak?
Here.
Fowler?
Here.
Burke?
Here.
We're missing Mrs. Lloyd and Larry Wells.
We do have four. Okay.
Yes.
All right, we have four resolutions. Can you close the door? We have four resolutions. We'll start with the first, amending the 2020 city budget to appropriate $183,912 in grant revenue from the Walton Family Foundation to the Sugar Creek Bridge Project Expenditure Account. If you remember, the bids that came into RDOT were higher than the original estimate of $600,000 by $183,912. We worked with RDOT and we worked with the Family Foundation. And the Family Foundation suggested that we submit a grant for the missing. And we did so. And it was approved last week by the foundation. And so that has made its whole. RDOT is chomping at the bit. They want to get started. Doug has been talking to both RDOT and to the foundation. And I want to thank you for your efforts, Doug, in putting this together. Are there any questions at all?
Mayor Christie, do you mind just recapping very briefly kind of the description of the projects for people who may not understand what we're trying to accomplish here? What's the project?
Yes, I'm going to ask Doug to do it because he has the plans actually in front of him, if I may.
Yeah, I've got the plans, a two-page set that I could email you if you want them after.
I want it covered in the meeting right now.
No, I mean, after the meeting, if it's something you want to say, I can still send it. But basically, what they're, it's a bridge improvement project. So the closest bridge to City Hall over Little Sugar Creek will be widened to five lanes. It'll have two lanes in each direction and a turn lane. The north side of the bridge will have a 10-foot paved path. In the south side of the bridge, we'll have a five-foot sidewalk. And those will both extend around the corner to Little Sugar Creek Bridge. And there'll also be a tunnel installed right before you get to Little Sugar Creek Bridge. Tangerine? Yeah, yeah, Tangerine, I'm sorry. So the sidewalk on both sides will run from Little Sugar Bridge to Tangerine Creek Bridge. There will be a tunnel and sidewalks on both sides of the bridge. And so the bridge is not getting replaced, it's just getting some updates and improvements.
Thank you, Doug.
Anybody else?
How long are we looking at, once they start to finish?
Once they start, the contractor bid 450 to 630 days of work.
Wow. Okay.
Anybody else? I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
So move. Second.
Any last thoughts?
Okay. Roll call vote. Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Lozniak?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
And Burke?
Yes.
Carrie, 4-0.
Thank you. The next resolution awarding bid and authorizing the purchase of various library furnishings from L&amp;M Office Furniture in the amount of $99,758.37 for use by the library. You may remember that in the capital plan that was approved for the year 2020, we had $300,000 in there for the library. We weren't quite sure how much this furniture was going to cost. It went to bid just before we closed for COVID. And we never got a chance to finish the process because of that closure. So we went to bid again fairly recently. We ended up with three bids. And I believe in your packet, you actually have an overview of those bids that Director Adams put in, let's see, L&amp;M was $99,758. Library Interiors of Texas was $140,334. Inner Plan of Northwest Arkansas was $43,994, but no bid most of the items. So that just wasn't going to cut it. So we chose L&amp;M. We have sat with them twice and gone through their plan to make sure that the furniture is exactly what Director Adams and her staff is expecting. Of the original $300,000 in capital, we have $227,000 that has not been spent and I suspect will not be spent so that we can carry it over for other projects in the coming year. Director Adams is on the call. Yes, there she is. So, any thoughts? Hi, Linda.
Yeah, I don't have a thought, just have a question. Whenever, whenever the design of the library is done, and I know the furniture isn't just, you know, chosen randomly, I guess, is that all kind of planned in? Do we have a consultant help us decide what needs to go in the library to be, you know, the most effective type of furniture? I mean, that's kind of a question, but I'm just curious. You don't just go through a catalog and pick out items and say, that would look good there and that would look good there. But I'm just curious how that's done.
No, we actually use the services of the architect. Because he is of great skill in doing interior design. And he suggested a number of companies and a number of solutions. The one thing we wanted to do, Doug, was to, in some cases, match some of the existing furniture. In other cases, we were cognizant that we wanted the same look from some of the bigger chairs to be the same in the reading room and throughout the library extension. And then in the common room, in the community room, we just wanted fairly light, easy stacking chairs so that we could stack them onto movable racks of 20. There were 80 in total, so that we could move them and store them properly in the doors, in the storage area that's been provided. So yes, it wasn't just picking up stuff out of a catalog and hoping that it would work. We actually did use some experts. And Suzanne and her team were also, as I say, trying to match some of the existing.
Is it possible to get a tour of the library? Yeah, I've gone by a couple of times. I know it's still closed down, but would it, could we, is there any way we could sneak in with the proper protocol? I'm excited about it. I'd just really like to get a look at it.
Yeah, sure, we can arrange that. Suzanne, can you get in touch with Councilmember Fowler, please? Is there anybody else who'd like to go through it as well?
Mayor Christie, I've been through the library recently. It looks fantastic. And I wanted to add also, in addition to the response you gave on the last question about where does the expertise come from? And we got some consultation from the architect. We also have a library director with decades of experience and other members of the staff with a lot of pertinent library experience. And I'm sure that they were important in the process, making the decision about what furniture was needed in the library as well.
Yes, indeed. In fact, when we opened up the bids and then when we met with the winner a second time, Suzanne had three of her direct reports there. And you're quite right, we had a lot of experience sitting in the room. And to Suzanne's credit, for example, the children's area, she let Ellen pretty much run with it because Ellen knew from her experience exactly the type of furniture that would work for the children. And that was great to see. So thank you for those comments. Is there anybody else that would like to have a tour? I see Suzanne is now on Hollywood Squares here.
Well, I had a question. I was wondering, I couldn't recall, I was wondering how this dollar amount compared to what we had pre-COVID, you know, we kind of had to start over, didn't it?
It was almost the same, wasn't it, Suzanne?
A little lower, actually.
Good.
One lower.
Very good, thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Suzanne? Okay, Suzanne, perhaps you and Doug could team up afterwards. And I know you'd be more than happy to take them through the new edition.
Yeah.
Anybody else have comments? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Second. Okay, roll call vote. Councilmember Lloyd? Linda, you're muted.
Don't mute, Linda.
Muted, sorry. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Lozniak?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
And Burke?
Yes.
Carrie, 5-0.
Thank you, Suzanne. Will you get in touch with the folks at L&amp;M, please, and get the process moving now?
Okay.
Perfect, thank you. Thanks for attending. Okay, the next resolution, amending the 2020 city budget to appropriate $6,810.14 in FEMA COVID-19 75-25 grant revenue to qualifying expenses. This was something that you were heading up, was it not, Chief? So Chief Sims was actually doing this. This is different from the COVID-19 CARES Act that you've heard us talk about through the municipal league, et cetera. This was the typical FEMA where it's 75-25 split. And so Chief Sims was gathering all the expenses for wipes, sanitizing liquid, et cetera, et cetera. And he processed it through. And as a result, we're seeing this money come in. But we have to formally present it to you for approval and to make a city budget amendment in order to take it in hand. Are there any questions for Chief Sims at all? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve. Mayor?
So move.
I think the state is going to cover another 25%. Is that right? They might, I might, I don't know that. I'm sorry. Chief was asking if the state was going to cover the remaining 25%. That's still an unknown at this point. Sorry, Wendy.
Hey, that's fine. We had a motion in a second, so roll call vote. Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Lozniak?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
And Lloyd?
Yes.
Carrie, 5-0.
Thank you. The last piece of business, approving a health insurance and benefit plan for the city employees to begin January the 1st, 2021. This is something that we do every year, especially if we're going to see some changes in the plan, which we are, not so much on the health side, but in some of the other areas. And Linda is here this evening. She had sent out an abridged version earlier in the day. And why don't you walk us through it?
Okay, do we have the PowerPoint? Yeah. Okay. And I will start out by apologizing that what you got in your packet is going to, there's a few changes on it. We were trying to get this in as soon as we could, once we got our rates back, in order to get open enrollment done in a timely way this year. And we found a couple of errors. So what you're seeing on your screen, if anybody wants me to send that to you via email as well, I can do that. Oh, you did already? Okay, never mind. Never mind. Okay, thank you. So last year, we kind of played with what is the employee responsible for in the buy-up plan, the base plan, and the high deductible plan, and changed some deductibles and out-of-pockets, et cetera. We did not make any of those changes this year. We are staying with Cigna, which is the same carrier we had last year. And the basic layout of each of the plans is exactly as it was last year. So there are no changes there. As every other year, there's always an increase. We had really good news, we thought, when we heard that we were going to get an 8.5% increase. And the broker and I talked and we said, hey, let's just see if we can get it down a little lower. And he came back with a 5% increase. So it's actually 3.5% lower than we originally thought it was going to be, which is great news. And if we base the increase on current enrollments, that means that annually, it's looking like it could only be about a $45,000 increase in our actual costs for next year. Obviously, that assumes a lot of stuff. During open enrollment, different people choose different policies, different plans, add family members, drop family members. So it's definitely an estimate, but we feel really good about it. Last year, our increase increased our plan by about $72,000 for the year. We're going to keep the same credits that are available to employees for not using tobacco products and for getting their physicals. There will be no changes to life, short-term or long-term disability, accident, hospital indemnity, critical illness, or identity theft plans. I'm not going to go through all the details of what we have, but those plans are all through Unum. Flexible spending accounts are still going to be available, as well as health savings accounts. The city will continue to contribute $600 towards a single high deductible plan health savings account. And then if you add any family member to your policy, the city contributes $1,200 annually. I almost said thousand, would that be nice? And then the 457 and 401A retirement plans, we didn't really amend those, but I just wanted to point out that because of COVID, there were some changes federally to those plans, which allow many more people to have hardship withdrawals without any kind of penalty. They still owe the taxes, but not the penalty that would otherwise apply. That's a very brief overview. Is there, are there any questions about the health account or the health plans?
Looks really good to me. Normally, we get nailed pretty hard. This is great.
We were pretty happy, that is, for sure. And then if we want to go to the next page, it's the dental, I think, yes, dental comes up next. We had our dental insurance through Unum. It came up for renewal this year. We were going to have an increase, so we shopped it around. Also, there were a lot of unhappy people with Unum for our dental insurance. We were able to get a Guardian plan, which has a wider network, a lower deductible, and a larger carryover. We were able to get those things added to our plan for the same cost as what the renewal rate was going to be under Unum. There is an 8.51% increase. So the overall cost, again, assuming same participation we have right now, would be about a $6,700 increase for the year. Looks like it's going to be a really good plan as well. So we're excited about that as well. And then the last page, vision insurance. We were not necessarily unhappy with our vision insurance, but we were able to actually get a better plan through Guardian because we got dental and vision through the same carrier. So we were able to get a better frame allowance for everybody under this plan. And instead of having a high plan and a low plan, we now will have one plan for vision, and it's the same cost as the low plan was last year. So we actually are getting more benefits for the same money as what the Unum plan cost us last year. And as you can see, we have better frame allowances and just really happy there's not going to be any additional costs to anyone. This is one that the employee pays 100% of the plan themselves. So I think they'll be really happy with this as well.
Those are the monthly payment or per-pay periods? That's not even monthly then, I guess, right?
It's right, it's per-pay period. And we take it, we take deductions out only twice a month, even when there are three pay periods in a month. So it's just whatever that is times two is the monthly amount the employee pays.
Linda, what was the issue with the HSA Cobra Administrator?
Oh, sorry, I forgot to bring that up. Oh my gosh, yeah, I don't even hardly want to talk about it, but it's kind of scary what was going on with them. They converted to a new system mid-year this year. And they started messing up so many HSA accounts. They weren't depositing the correct amount, they weren't, it wasn't, the deposits weren't matching the amounts that were coming out of paychecks or the amounts that we were contributing. At present, we are still trying to reconcile all of that. Rachel, I swear, every day, gets a new email with, hey, does this look right? Kind of stuff. It was very, it became a mess after they transferred to a new system. And they were not very responsive in trying to get it corrected. So we started looking for a new third-party administrator for that. We did some investigating, had some really good feedback about discovery from some other companies using them. And we really feel good about that they're going to be a lot better company to work with for that.
So have you guys started having your meetings with the city employees yet?
We have to wait for this first.
No, we have to get this approved first. Okay, so this is step one. Step two will be, our broker will get all of the materials ready for the employees. And so what we're going to do is send that out ahead of the meetings. We are not going to have any in-person meetings. We're going to be holding a, what are we doing, John? Not a Zoom, but a?
Yeah, Zoom.
We are going to do Zoom. Okay, we're going to hold an online meeting where a broker's going to be here. We'll get employees' questions, hopefully answer those questions, give them the opportunity to link in if they want. We are also going to record that session so they, people who can't attend can watch it later, and so can spouses. And we think that meeting's probably going to happen the middle of the first week of November. So we're a whole month ahead of where we were last year, which is going to make people much happier, I'm sure.
No, Glenda's done a great job for us this year. I have weekly calls with other mirrors in the area. Most of them are facing double-digit increases this year. So we are indeed fortunate to be down to 5%.
Good job, Linda.
Yeah.
Thanks. Good job, everybody who didn't go to the doctor this year.
Are there any other questions for Linda?
Well, you know, just one last one. And I, so I know you haven't done the enrollment period yet, but what percentage of our employees participate in our health insurance plan? And are majority of them the high deductible with the HSA?
Let me see if I can tell you the numbers. Yeah, we have the highest participation in the HSA and the high deductible plan. And then the next plan is base plan. And then we have a few, not a ton of people anymore in the buy-up plan. In fact, I was just talking to another employee today about like, looking at, you know, is that, is the high deductible a better plan or not? I mean, it's kind of hard because it's very individualized based on what your health situation is. But the fact that the city actually contributes money toward the HSA is a real bonus to everybody. We have approximately 130, you know, it changes every month based on who's working here at any given time, but around 130 to 135 out of about 168 employees were eligible. So it's pretty high participation.
Yeah, that's good.
Any other questions for Linda?
Good job.
Good job.
Thank you.
All righty. I'd entertain a motion to approve the resolution, please.
So move.
Second. Roll call vote. Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Lloyd?
Yes.
Flynn?
Yes.
Lozniak?
Yes.
Carrie, 5-0.
Thank you. That ends the special session. We are now adjourned. We are now ready to go into the work session before we begin. Anybody want to take a breather? Take five minutes or whatever, refresh your coffee. Okay, we will begin the work session. I'll call it to order. No need for attendance. We have two old pieces of business, both going for third reading. One is the hazardous trees, the dead trees, and the other is fence enclosures around outdoor pools. We've had a lot of discussion about this over the last few months. And I would propose that we don't go through the same material that everybody's talked about before. You will have an opportunity, of course, to state final comments at the normal session, which will be a week today. But has anybody got any new information that they'd like to share? Okay.
I just see on the pools and spas, so the with or without cover was added to that, it was amended, right?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, I see that it was, so.
Right.
It wasn't in the?
Linda offered that amendment and you all approved it last month.
Yeah, I just see it was written in here, so, yep.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll move into new business. First is an ordinance setting the amount of additional fine to be levied pursuant to Arkansas Code Annotated 1617-129 to defray the costs of incarcerating city prisoners and for other purposes. State law allows a $20 increase. The last increase was $5 in 2011. This is an increase of $15. If you've been watching the cost that counties been levying against the cities, it's been going up constantly. And I know that Mr. Kelly has stayed on top of this. Counselor, do you have any thoughts on this?
Well, I just know from the chief that our, we, let me give you a little history. We adopted a jail fee, which state law allows us to adopt back when we first became a city or shortly thereafter. And we set it up, if I'm not mistaken, to the max. I think we set it up way high. And we ended up with a surplus because the dollars are restricted. You have to use that money for incarcerating prisoners, either paying the county to incarcerate prisoners, or I guess if we had a city jail to fund that. But in any event, the, we had that fee and we started getting a surplus in that account. Now, this wasn't when I was here. So I just know from seeing the history since then that there was a decision to reduce it down because basically we were collecting too much. And so it was put at the amount that it is right now, which is $5 per charge, basically. And the state allows us to charge an amount not to exceed $20 per charge. And so this one goes to 15. And I believe, and I'd let the chief add to this, or perhaps Carrie, I don't know if she's online, but they did a little calculation to see what it needs to be in order to break even. And so I think that's where the $15 came from. And so that's sort of the source, what we're seeking to do. And I let the chief add whatever on that.
Chief, you want to try? I could try them real quick. So it came to our attention, in 2019, we actually ended up in the red, $1,655. And then through the rest of this year, we've got substantially worse. And so just by looking at it, you know, the $5 obviously wasn't covering it. My first guy here, Chief Farmer, did tell me that we had quite a bit in that account, which we did, because it had built up from that 20s. We know 20s too high. I want to set it 15 now to dig us out of the hole, because right now, we're $6,300 and change in the hole. And so that's money the city's paying out of general fund to incarcerate prisoners. And that's not what we're supposed to be doing. In reality, this fund should cover that. So my intent is to set it at 15, get us back to a level playing field, and then get a good idea, based on history, what we're spending every year. Just try to, you know, whether or not eventually I come back to and bring it back down to 10 because we built it back up sufficiently enough to, we're not carrying a huge balance in there year to year, but we're not also in the red year to year.
Any questions for Mr. Kelly or Chief Graves? Steve, you're on mute. Steve, you're still on mute.
How's that?
There you go.
Chief, is this common in other?
Steve, is this common in other locations? I mean, I'm kind of just thinking in the broadest context of this tagging on additional fees for somebody who is, may have run a stop sign, that they're going to make a contribution to housing prisoners. What, what's kind of the connection there? And is this, is this common to other areas of the country as well?
Jason, you look like you want to try that.
I, I can, I mean, it's, it's very typical in Arkansas. In fact, it's authorized by a state statute and it's 1617129. If you're interested in looking that up, we'll be sending it to you. But it's very common. And, and the theory behind it is, yes, it's, it's every speeding ticket, it's every stop sign, it's also every DWI case, every battery, every assault, every, every charge that we deal with. The theory being that viola, that violators should, should be the one bearing the cost rather than those that aren't violating. So. But I can tell you, Steve, just in, I don't know about the country, I don't know how it works in other states, but in Arkansas, I would dare say every community with a court has a fee like this to deal with their prisoners, I'm going to guess.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Anybody else have questions?
Well, I just noted Larry Williams has got none on the call. He doesn't seem to have a microphone, so perhaps having reception difficulties.
Yeah, I saw him pop up. Okay, we'll move on. That's an ordinance.
So, just a question real quick. Because I am just so cognizant of our traffic laws and what the policy, and I just am such a safe driver, I have, just don't get tickets and, you know.
It only means you're overdue.
Yeah. Chief Graves, you take care of that, please, just.
So, I mean, I don't even know, what, what is the, the, the cost of running a stop sign or a speeding ticket presently? I mean, if you're, if, if it's 30 miles an hour and you're clocked at 40 and you get a ticket, what is the fine for that?
Well, in order, it, it depends on your record. It, it depends on, well, it does depend on the speed, but the, the judge has what's called a bond forfeiture sheet. And so he, the judge decided that if you are alleged to have driven zero to 10 over, then the, the amount to, to be collected might be $175. If it's 10 to 20 over, it, it might be $180. And it, it's graduated like that depending on the amount of speed. Now, the the maximum fine for a speeding ticket is $100 plus costs. So you've got state mandated court costs, you've got this jail fee that we currently collect at $5. And there are other things, add-ons to that. Currently, that total add-on is 85, or excuse me, on speeding tickets is $85 in addition to the fine, which could go up to 100. So if you've had a bunch of tickets on your record, you're going to end up paying a little bit more. If it's your first ever violation, you're probably going to get, pay a little bit less. But I can generally tell you that people that get a speeding ticket are going to pay somewhere between $150 to $190, somewhere in there. It is ultimately up to the judge. Now, on stop signs, I don't recall how much he wants on the bond sheet, but usually I would say the plea offers are court costs plus about $50 to write a stop sign. But we don't see many stop signs being run, believe it or not. I don't see a lot of those charges. We have a lot of careless driving charges and speeding charges. And, you know, our police don't really go out of their way to write a lot of turn signals and, and and, and other, you know, brake lights and that kind of stuff. We don't see a lot of that. See a lot of no vehicle license. We'll see fictitious vehicle license, which where someone took a plate off another car and put it on the one they're driving. Things like that. Now, that's just the traffic. This, this jail fee that we're talking about is collected on all misdemeanor offenses, not just traffic. So that's, that's everything that, all the offenses in the book, which would get you up to a year in jail and/or $2,500 fine.
Gotcha. Okay.
Mr. Kelly, would you like this brought to third and final at the meeting?
That's up to chief. This is chief's proposal. So, well, it doesn't have an emergency clause, and so it's going to be a while before it takes effect. And it'll take a little while for the court clerk to get the computer recalculated and all that. So if y'all want to go ahead and do three readings and, and get it adopted, if that's the will of the council, I think just with the normal amount of time, that would allow us to get that done. But I'll let the chief speak on that for sure.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would assume we do as quick as we can, only because right now the city is paying money out of the general fund. And legally, it shouldn't be paying, that, that money should be used for something else. And so I'd rather do what we can as quick as we can to get that account at least in the black.
Okay, thank you. If there are no further questions, let's move on. The next is a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter into a contract with Creedon Dodge of Fort Smith for the purchase of a 2020 Dodge Ram truck pursuant to a state procurement contract in an amount not to exceed $28,675 for the Community Development Services Department. This, too, is approved in the 2020 budget because of COVID and the cessation of all what I might call non, or not necessary costs. This was put to one side. We're now able to move forward with it. And Councilmember Wozniak, you'll be very happy to know that this particular truck is not going to have all the, all the decals and everything else that the other ones have had. This will have just a normal City of Belavista on the two doors. Doug, this is replacing an existing truck that is spending more time in the garage than it is on the, on the road.
Well, it's, it's, the existing truck will still be used, but it is spending a lot of time. And so we have three planners and a plans examiner that are currently using one old truck. They check it out one at a time. So this will add a vehicle to the fleet that we can all use.
Yeah, you know what? My biggest thing with $400 a truck for an awful bunch of decals that really weren't needed, it's just a waste of money. Everything else has three little squares on it. You know, that should have gone the same way.
Oh, you'd be glad to know this one's just going to have the three little squares.
Hey, one in a row.
Anybody else? Alrighty. The next resolution is setting the meeting schedule of this, of the Belavista City Council for the calendar year 2021. This is a housekeeping item that we do this time every year. City Clerk Dirksen had sent it out as a draft. We had some feedback from some of you and we adjusted accordingly. Is there anybody with thoughts? Does it look okay? You can see on certain months, we've moved it forward because of holidays later in the month. Okay.
That regular meeting on Monday, so Christmas would be on Friday or Saturday?
It's on a Friday this year.
We don't have a meeting the week of Christmas at all.
It's the week before, I believe. It's the 15th? Something like that?
Well, I was looking at the regular meeting date. That's 12/20. And Christmas is the 25th, so that's going to be Monday before Christmas on
That wasn't supposed to be.
But Christmas on Saturday?
Doesn't sound right. I don't have a calendar. No, Wayne, that's wrong.
That's not right.
No, it's not right, Doug. Hey, we'll get that changed. You've got 12/13 and 12/20?
Okay.
Should be.
Wasn't it the?
No, it's a week earlier than that.
Right. So it should be 12:06, isn't it?
Uh, I think it's the 7th.
7th is on Monday.
7th? Yeah, you're right, Doug. It should be, it should be 12:07 and 12/13.
My mistake. I left a check that what I sent out I thought was, was corrected, but I apologize. I'll have it taken care of before the, before it's approved next Monday, so.
Wouldn't it be 12? And 12/13?
Excuse me?
Wouldn't it be 12:06 and 12/13 if you move it back a week?
Well, it's 12:07 and 12/14, Larry.
Yeah, 7 and 14. We're talking next year, Larry, not this year. We're talking a year from now.
Yeah, you, it'll be, you'll have it right by next Monday, so.
Yeah, it'll be corrected.
And we'll go through and just double-check the rest of the dates as well. Thanks, Doug.
Yep.
Be seven days shorter than the 13th, make it 06.
Yeah, I, I just pulled up the calendar for 2021, and the Monday is December 6th and December 13th.
Okay, fair enough.
That's fine. You will do, right?
Alrighty, let's go to the next resolution. This one is also housekeeping, approving the appointment of Ashley Jones to a five-year term on the Public Library Advisory Board to begin January the 1st, 2021, replacing Callum Elickin. I want to thank Mr. Elickin for his, serving his full term. He unfortunately has moved to Bentonville. And Ashley has stepped forward. And she is involved in the library today as president of Friends of the Library. She has two or three children that just love going to the library. And I'm sure that she will be a good addition to the board. Are there any questions at all? Okay, the next is a housekeeping as well, is approving the reappointment of Mary Ann Farner to a five-year term on the Public Library Advisory Board to begin January the 1st, 2021. For the past six years, Mary Ann has been the chair of the board and has done a fine job for us. At one time, she was actually our library director here until she retired. She has always kept her finger in the pie, so to speak, and has done a great job. And I believe Suzanne, if you're still on, I think you might agree as well that she's been very easy to work with and is very knowledgeable. Are there any questions about Mary Ann Farner? Okay, the next resolution, amending the 2020 city budget to appropriate $5,404,958.63 in restricted municipal fire improvement bond revenue toward qualified fire improvement project expenditures and to appropriate $18,483,998.67 in restricted municipal public safety improvement bond revenue toward qualified public safety improvement project expenditures. So what this is saying is the bond has now closed. You may remember I sent a note out to you that that was the case. And US Bank, as our trustee, now has the funds and there is a process in place for the vendor bills to be sent through Carrie and myself. And we double-checked with both chiefs and with Tabitha in the court. If all is fine, then we send it through the requisition process to US Bank to be paid. However, we still have to work up a budget for these projects so that we can adequately track it. We have line items that were done by Raymond James as part of their prep. We shared that with you as well. And so that will be the beginning of the budget. So it may seem a little odd because we don't have the money, so people may say, well, why do you have to have a budget? And the answer is because we have to, will once again be responsible for taxpayer dollars and make sure that every penny that is spent is spent wisely and within the budget. Any questions at all?
Mayor Christie?
I have a question, Peter.
John, John, just a sec, Steve's up.
Okay.
Mayor Christie, the numbers you read are not what I'm looking at in our agenda tonight. So I, I don't know if you're working off the agenda, I, I believe.
I'm reading the agenda, page two of two, item F.
Yeah, I had the same question as Steve. If you look, that's what the agenda says, but then if you look at the resolution, it's got completely different numbers. You know, you've got all this stuff attached.
Placeholder numbers or something.
Yeah, the resolution has 750 grand and 250 grand. And the title at the top has these big numbers that you just read.
Page 50, the agenda.
I think I can explain that. Initially, we had a resolution that would just handle some current bills. And then the decision was made by Carrie and investing with Jason, we redid it to accommodate for the whole bond issue in both different categories. And so what must have happened is I put the correct resolution title in, but I must have gotten the wrong resolution in your packet. So again, I'll correct that. So we'll be correct for Monday's meeting.
The, the correct amounts are the big numbers. It's 18.4 million for the fire and, excuse me, 18.4 million for the public safety and 5.4 million for the fire.
And that's the resolution I've got in my packet.
Well, that's what I thought, too. So I don't know where you got that. Steve, you and John both have that?
I'm looking at online right now, the online.
That's what mine has, too. That's what was on the agenda on the city council meetings.
Wayne, I'll make sure you got the right one.
Yeah, no, I know I have it. I'll check on that and see. I, I don't know.
Okay.
But your printout of it is correct.
Yep.
Okay, well, that's odd. All right, we will correct that. Sorry. Thank you for bringing it up.
Okay, the final resolution, establishing residential and commercial rates for solid waste trash collection in the city. Again, we do that every fall. If you remember from past years, the contract that we have with Republic states that the increase will be based on the Consumer Price Index for water, sewer, trash. That index is 3.4%. However, given where we are now, Republic agreed to a 3% increase. One of their big challenges at the moment, especially on the residential side, is the increase in trash is approximately 30 to 35% over previous years because people, of course, are not going to the office and they're working at home. So that means that they have more expenses for trips to the transfer station as the, as the drivers are out there doing their routes. Nevertheless, I was still cognizant of some people in the city who may be struggling because of the loss of the job, the lack of a stimulus. And so there is a turnback fee that we charge as part of the rate. And it was last year, $2.27. So in discussing with Republic and running it by Carrie and also Mr. Kelly, what we decided to do was that we would reduce that from $2.27 to just $2. So that the actual increase for residential trash will be 10 cents a month or $1.20 a year. And I think that's probably reasonable and certainly should not pose any kind of hardship. We can easily cover that additional loss of the 27 cents, which is roughly $40,000 a year because of the increase that we've seen in the sales and use tax. And also the proposed increase that we think we will see in property taxes this year, because the building just hasn't stopped. So the residential rate, as I mentioned, currently is $14.50 a month. Next year, we're proposing that it to be $14.60 a month. And the business will see a 3% increase, except for the billing and bin costs. And, and the costs per pickup on street repair, that hasn't changed. So it's a little different from past years, but I felt that we had an obligation, since we were doing so well on the tax side, to lower this in favor of a much smaller increase, I think, than we've ever seen for a long, long time. Are there any questions? All right. That, I believe, brings us to the end of the agenda.
There's one more.
Oh, that's right. There's one more that came in at the last minute.
Right, at BZA.
It's a, it's appointment of Jeffrey Walton to position six of the BZA. His resume is included in the packet. Again, this is a housekeeping item and it came in at the last minute. Any questions at all? Okay. Now let's move on to discussion items. Doug, do you want to take us through Sunset Drive, please?
Sure. I got an update from the owner's rep this morning. They completed the Redding Rock retaining wall last week. We've been out and looked at that. Looks good. He's telling me that the contractor believes they can get the backfill in up to the shoulder of the roof. He's telling me that the contractor believes they can get the backfill in up to the shoulder of the road and the waterline installed between now and the end of the month. And they hope to have that tested by the end of the month. And so if that all goes well, they can then begin work on the road. So we're hopeful that in the next couple of weeks, they will begin working on the shoulder. That's good news. I don't see any problems.
Now, there was that easement issue?
Well, the wall, I don't know if you've seen the wall, the pieces of rock that they used were so large that they encroached on the city roadway by six inches. So what we did was we got on a right-of-way permit and we got a signed affidavit from Dr. Hull stating that all parts of the wall are her ownership and to be maintained forever by, by her, that the city would not be involved with that wall in any way. So.
Doug, are we still going to do a right-of-way vacation on that six inches, aren't we?
We are, we are.
All right.
Point being that we don't want a council, say, 30 years from now, stuck with a bill for six inches of an encroachment onto an easement when we knew all along it was there. Let's, let's call it out now, deal with it now, and do it properly.
Well, the bigger, the bigger issue would be a, a city council 50 years from now having to pay to rebuild the wall.
Correct.
Supposedly in the right of way.
Correct.
You know, so.
And they were, they were good with us vacating that six inches or more. We may even do a little bit more just to make sure that it's not on, on the city.
And they brought that to our attention?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, thanks Doug. Let's move on to the bridges. We've already talked about it. Septic versus bedrooms, Linda?
Okay, I've been in touch with Doug and Jason about some issues we're having with builders. Now normally, if a builder's going to go buy a lot that's not on public sewer, they make an offer on the lot and they go pay $375 to have a soils test done. Then if they find out that the house they want to build and the soils test doesn't allow them to build on that lot, then they've wasted a lot of time and money. So then they go, the good builders go on to another lot. What's happening is builders are now deciding, well, gee, if the lot says I can put a two-bedroom septic in, I'm going to build a quote four-bedroom house, but it's going to be a two-bedroom house with a den and an exercise room. So builders are basically starting to work the system. And that's a future problem. It's going to be really an issue because, well, one particular house that, that we all looked up, they, their application to the health department was for a two-bedroom house. Their application to the city was for a three-bedroom house, but then they changed it to a two-bedroom house. And it's listed in the multi-list as a four-bedroom house with a four-bedroom floor plan, which is different from the one they presented to the city. So somebody's going to buy this house, potentially with a couple of kids. And then when they go to sell that house, they're not going to know it or remember it's a two-bedroom septic, then somebody else with a bigger family is going to buy that house. So we're creating a huge problem down the road. And I, I think Jason and Doug would agree, we can't say that when the builder brings us a floor plan and it shows two bedrooms and two other rooms, that they're really bedrooms. So we can't get our guys in Doug's department into deciding whether it is or isn't a bedroom. At one point, like the ACC said, you can put in the room, but it can't have a closet. But then what the builders can do is after Doug's, the guys give a certificate of occupancy, then the builders go back and add the closet in so they can sell it as a bedroom. So this is a future problem that's, that's really gonna, it's, it's going to really be an issue. Doug even pointed out that they had a permit for an 8,600 square foot, one-bedroom house. Is now failing on that house, duh. And they're having to cross POA common land to another lot that they built, they bought to add on extra septic capacity. So I think we need to do something about this issue.
But?
Why?
What?
What's the solution?
Well, once, we need to get to a solution that's not subjective, like is or isn't it a bedroom? So a solution that one of my fellow realtors came up with out of Texas is that if it's a two-bedroom septic, you can't build more than, say, a 1,500 square foot house. If it's a three-bedroom septic, you can't build more than, I don't know, Doug, what was the next number?
2,500.
2,500 square foot house. And if, if it's a, you know, a four-bedroom septic, which we don't really have many of unless you're on a double lot, you can't build more than a?
3,500.
Okay, square foot house. That makes it completely objective. You don't have to get into, is it a bedroom? Is it not a bedroom? When the building permit comes in, the folks in Doug's office can determine, hey, it's X amount of square feet. You need this big a septic system. So that's what I would suggest that we do because doing anything else is going to get us into a real issue. And people who might not be familiar with building, in most places, if you buy a lot and you want to put in a septic system, you're required to have a primary septic site and a secondary septic site. None of our Bella Vista lots have that because they were platted so long ago, it's not required. So in most new houses out elsewhere, other than in our existing lots, if the first septic system failed, you would have a secondary site. None of our Bella Vista small lots have that available.
I did take this to Mark Hayes down at the municipal league, thinking perhaps there are other communities that would be in the same boat. He asked his legal team to look at it about two or three weeks ago. And I touched base today and they had no comment. So I don't know if there are other cities that are having this problem or if it's just unique to Bella Vista. But clearly, I saw the listing, I saw one of the listings and the builder, I think, was trying to protect himself. Doug, didn't he have in the MLS listing, he was advertising four bedrooms? But then he said, no, this is a two, a two-bedroom septic?
Correct. In small print, they disclosed it's a four-bedroom house on a two-bedroom septic. So that makes it legal.
Well, that makes the, it not a violation for the Realtors Association, but it doesn't help the problem because most realtors, when they list a house, do not go and pull the plat. I do. So if four years down the road, I go to resell that house, I will know it's a two-bedroom septic and disclose it as such. But most people are not going to know, either know it or do it. And then we end up down the road with a house that either can't be occupied or requires a $20,000 septic refit.
And what do you do if you don't have a sewer system connection available or access to expanding your septic type site on adjacent vacant land?
You abandon the house.
Not a good plan.
No, definitely. It's a, it's a huge down-the-road problem.
I, I, I agree with Linda's approach. I think it's a viable one. I would be inclined to reduce the square footage maximum based on bedroom sizes from what Doug was describing. It, it keeps it a little bit more in our control. And it's a viable way to do that and it's a measurable way, which is objective, not subjective.
How'd you get your square footage?
Linda got it.
Oh, Linda. Linda, I believe we got the square footage from yourself.
Well, I got them from Sherry Lemley, who was talking with some people in Texas. And that's how they've solved their problem, by using those square footages. And we, we can play with the square footages. I just wanted us to discuss the, the, the theory and the process, and we can work on the square footages. But the longer we put this off, the more problems we're going to have down the road.
I, I agree with you, Linda, that we need to move quickly on this. When I bought my first house in Bella Vista, it was purchased as a two-bedroom, but really had three bedrooms because the septic was two-bedroom. But they advertised it as a three-bedroom house. And so when I found out that it had only a two-bedroom septic, we made an adjustment in the price at closing in order to expand the system and make it equivalent to what they were selling. So it is a problem because the buyer is usually not aware of what the septic rating is versus what maybe the realtor has listed it as. That's another, another side of the problem.
And it's crazy, the real estate market is right now, somebody's going to look at the house, these houses, walk through them and buy them. They're not going to really care about the size of the septic.
Exactly.
Years down the road.
Yep.
Okay, all good points. Linda, do you want to work with Larry and Mr. Kelly and put something together?
Yeah, that, I will certainly do that.
Okay, great. I agree, we need to get on top of this immediately. Okay, let's go to the last, that's not on your item, but I know it's one that's near and dear to all our hearts, and that's controlled burns. So we're not talking residential leaves here. We're talking building lots. And we've had a lot of complaints recently, especially if the builder is clearing a lot that is inside or surrounded by homes. Now, I want to preface it by saying, I'm not sure if all of you are familiar with the way that a lot is cleared by a builder. Typically, they clear everything and they put it into the center. Chief, I believe that's correct? So that they have, what, at least 30 to 50 feet surrounding as a break? Okay?
Completely cleared.
So it's completely cleared. Now, I tasked Doug to have a look at this and he's brought together a proposal and we're going to pop it up on the screen for you to see and he'll walk you through it.
Well, the chief and I have been trying to decide what would be the best way to get builders to haul this off. So we looked at pricing and that was, it's, it's going to be expensive. But a few options we discussed would be so many feet from an occupied structure, so many lots from an occupied structure, or a structure in sight. Those are, is that the three options that we've kind of been mulling around? So we're just trying to come up with a, a way that when folks, when builders call in to get their burn permit, we can either fire department or CVS measure the distance from the lot to the nearest structure or if it's a nice house, because we're getting complaints from people that are four, five, six lots away. Is that right, chief?
That's correct.
So those are just some, I, I mentioned the, the two drawings there. One shows the distance on two lots and then one shows the distance on five lots, the next one down, John. So we really just wanted to discuss it with you all and get some thoughts on, have you had experiences with builders burning near your home? Or have you had people reach out to you with that complaint? And do you think that it just, that it just, the, the number of complaints justifies enacting some sort of a burn ban on these lots that are near occupied structures?
Well, I definitely think it's an issue. I mean, if I had a lot cleared right next to me and they're burning on it, I, you know, I, I wouldn't appreciate it. And, you know, one of the calls that we had out here, I drove by, and this has been a couple of months ago now. I believe the gentleman, well, I won't say the gentleman's last name. But what, what was interesting when I drove out to the area was how far away the resident's house was from where the lot was that was actually burned. But it, I, I believe it was actually more than one lot that was burned. And I noticed within that period of time, just the, the street right up behind mine, a lot was cleared and there was a pile in the middle that had been burned. And I'll be honest with you, I didn't even know it. I, I need to go up and, and talk to the people that live around that house up behind me and see what type of effect it had on them. But I do agree, we need to do something. You know, it, it, no one, no one appreciates that situation, you know, I, I don't believe.
Okay. Mr. Kelly, I think you wanted to say something?
Well, all I was going to say is if, if you want to get into the area of regulating nearby or within it, I really think you need to, from an enforceability perspective, talk about it in terms of number of feet from the property line where the burning is taking place to the nearest, say, habitable structure. Because if you start talking about within sight, different people have different sight, different times of the year, you can see something when the leaves are gone, that's going to be unworkable and probably unenforceable. If you start talking about numbers of lots, well, which direction are we talking about? Does the common property behind the house count as a lot? You end up in lots of quandaries, I think. So I think that if the council wants to require hauling, if there's a habitable structure within a certain distance, I think you need to define that distance. And that way, it becomes very easy for the enforcement people to take a tape measure and put it on the line and walk it out and see how close it is.
Well, also, I mean, how, how long can a pile burn? I mean, you know, there are different sizes of piles. Some of these things can smolder for, you know, a few days.
Yeah, chief agrees. Anybody else?
Well, just to that point also, an unattended fire is irresponsible and dangerous. If, if they're burning green, it's not going to burn the same day. It could burn overnight. And I, I, I don't think we need another ordinance against that. If, if a fire is unattended and it's burning overnight, I think the fire department ought to put it out.
Steve, that's normally what we do. If we have somebody complains about a large lot burn or large control burn and they complain about it, we generally put the fire out or put water on it.
Good job.
One thing I did want to, you know, make a comment about, we've been talking about feet and so forth, and I agree with Jason on that. Before we burned storm debris last year, when we had the storm and everything, we burned the debris. We had, we had to go to the ADQ to get this done, you know, especially in a municipality and city and so forth. We had to get waivers from, from homes that were within 500 feet of that burn site. So 500 feet's a pretty good, that's what ADQ kind of considers a good manageable space to, to have somebody say, yes, you can, or no, I don't want this burning taking place. So that, I mean, it's something we had to do as a city to burn a large debris, which would be like a lot, lot burn. When we were burning our debris, our storm debris, sure, so. Okay. John, did you have something?
In a related issue to that, one of the complaints that I've heard frequently is that when they do the clearing of the lot, how do we validate that in fact, they're not clearing in the common space or common property area next to them? Do they, do, do you require that the lot be surveyed and staked so you know where the property boundaries are before you issue a permit?
Yes, sir, Larry. Before they clear the lot, they get a grading and erosion control permit from us and we go out to verify that the corners have been staked with pink ribbon. So once they get that permit, they should know where their boundary line is. They put up erosion control if it's on the downhill side. So there should be no question with them clearing property down on POA, that shouldn't be happening.
So, so you, you, you verified that those lot corners stakes are there before you actually issue the permit then?
Correct.
Okay.
John? Well, okay, go ahead.
They come in and buy the permit and then we, we go make sure that the surveyor actually staked the corners for them. If they don't, then we, we get in touch with them.
How do they mark the corners from a visual standpoint? Do they put lathe in and mark them or do you look at the iron pins?
They find the iron pins and mark them with pink ribbon.
Okay. Okay.
All right, John?
Well, I was just going to say, there's two, the people complained to me, there's two things they're worried about. Some people complain about the smoke issue and others are concerned from Some people complain about the smoke issue and others are concerned from a safety point of view, especially when a fire burns overnight. They're afraid that it'll, you know, spread and become a safety issue if nobody's watching it.
And many of them are not active burns, I don't think, where you have really a lot of flame. They're kind of smoldering there but continuing to burn. So it's not a, not a, not a huge fire like a bonfire in many cases.
My experience or the experience we've had on the fire department side is when you get a call of somebody after hours that calls in about a large lot burn, when we get out there, it's generally something that's smoldering, no active fire, just smoldering and putting off smoke. So, and then, you know, on, on case-by-case situations, if it's, if it does have fire, looks like there's gonna be fire, then players up, we'll actually put the lot out, we'll fire out.
In fact, while you were away, we put probably four or five of them out.
Oh, yeah, one of them was over on York, I think. Was that a double lot burn?
It was, yeah.
Yeah, and especially on the east side with the stump down recently, you know, getting over that, a lot of people are still on edge with, with a lot of smoke and air and so forth. And we're seeing a lot on the east side.
Understandably so.
I, I think I know the answer, but what, what is the alternative to doing a big burn on the lot? It's hauling it out, right?
Hauling it out. Just to put it into perspective, we went to the construction manager for fire station number three and we said, how much, how much would it cost to haul it off? And the projected cost was between twenty and twenty-five thousand dollars, which is, of course, not in the original budget. Now, that particular piece of land is at least five hundred feet away from the closest house, I believe. But just to put it into some kind of perspective for us, when I talk to individual builders, Doug, you know, the typical lot is a point three-one, Linda, somewhere around there. And, and I'm being told it's anywhere between eleven and twelve hundred dollars to haul.
Sorry, that's, 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 that might be necessary and as an alternative to burning and, and putting people through that who are close by, so.
Oh, I agree. I agree. And frankly, eleven hundred dollars onto a, a three-hundred-thousand-dollar home is peanuts. Linda?
Well, I think what you're gonna find, especially when we're considering adding extra fees onto builders anyway, that what we wanna avoid is the builder pulling it up in a truck, pulling into a vacant cul-de-sac and dumping it. Because that's city's responsibility. And I think a lot of builders are already illegally taking the stuff to Missouri and sticking it in a holler.
I would have to agree with you. Okay, well, we'll keep working on it. Doug will work on the five hundred feet issue. You know, we did get some rain. I don't know if we actually got enough. I think it was about an inch that you saw on your?
Eight tenths.
Eight tenths of an inch. So it's a start, but we need a lot more yet. Okay, well, that's all I've got. Anybody else have anything they wanna put on the counter?
Mayor Christie, it's been kind of a theme tonight, but I know Councilmember Flynn is working on assessing impact fees and how that might go down. I'd like to get that added to discussion items going forward.
John, you wanna give us an update, please?
Yeah, we had bids come in and we, we have arranged conference calls with a couple of bidders. Actually, there were just a couple of bidders. We're gonna have a conference call with each of them. I'm expecting that to be on the agenda in November at the work session and at the, at the meeting in November.
So these are people bidding to consult the city of Bella Vista?
Yeah. So I think we're gonna have something for you to sink your teeth into next month.
All right, good deal.
We wanted to look at that documentation. Where would we go to find it, to review it?
Yeah, I think we can get, Wayne, we can get copies to people if they wanna look at it, can't we?
Yeah, we, I have copies here at City Hall if someone wants to look at them.
We don't have, you don't have those? We don't get it, didn't get a digital submittal?
No, but I could probably scan them and come up with something. My intention wasn't to do that until after the committee had actually interviewed and determined if both were viable and move forward or if the committee had a recommendations, you know, to the council, I'd go from there, so. But if you wish, I can scan them and, and send them to you, so you can look them over as well.
One is quite large, is it not?
Yeah. One is small, one's pretty large.
I, I would, I would encourage the city to take on the policy that on any submissions or proposals that they get a duplicate in digital format so that you have it in your file, so if it's easily accessible for review, it's not a big deal to do that and most of the firms generate that as a standard procedure anyway.
All right, thanks Steve. Anything else? All righty.
Just one last, just one, on the septic versus the bedrooms, Linda, you know, you obviously are well versed in that. I mean, versus just doing a wide-open search on the net to try to educate myself on that a little bit, can, can you provide a little direction on where I could go to, to start to do a little research on that? So I could understand it better?
What, what exactly are you trying to get to to understand it, Doug?
Well, you say, you know, this is gonna be an issue in the future. So, so the, the, the square footage maximum, like if it's a four-bedroom, the house can only be thirty-five hundred square feet? I mean, I guess you said there was a city that had already enacted some type of ordinance restricting the size of homes versus the size of the septic with the number of bedrooms?
Yeah.
So who is that?
I would have to dig that out. Someone else found that for me.
Okay. Well, I would just like to see it, you know, just to, just to see what it entails.
Okay.
I mean, if we're thinking about going down the path, you know, of, of potentially doing something, I would like to see what some other cities have done.
Okay.
I think we should be able to find something on that.
I'll get it to Wayne and he can send it out.
Okay, thank you Linda. Anybody else?
One question is, how are we doing on the implementation of our 2040 plan now that we have one in place?
Sir?
We haven't, we haven't done anything as of yet, but we're gonna get a, we're gonna get a plan, Doug. And I've spoken about getting either?
There that seemed urgent to be done and I'm wondering just where we are in terms of having that on our priority list and in our active column.
Well, we're trying to determine who's gonna implement that, whether it's additional staff or, Doug and I, Councilman Fowler and I have talked, spoken a couple of times about whose responsibility that's gonna be. I know he's reached out to a couple of other cities to see how they handle theirs. And so we've been in talks since then on ways to move forward.
And CDS, Larry, has been down three heads and they've just hired three people. It's very, very difficult to find people to hire these days. There's just very little.
We need to hire people for what? I didn't, I didn't hear that part.
Code inspectors, city inspectors for buildings, et cetera?
I, I don't know that, do I, I don't recall anywhere in the?
No, Larry, Larry, they're just backfills.
Yeah, they're just backfill, Larry, and he's spending his time trying to find people there. We are about to file it with the county as well and so Wayne's working on that.
Talking about current staff vacancies.
Yes.
Is that what you're talking?
Yeah, that's right. And he's also involved in getting his budget ready for you for November. By the way, you'll see your first blush on the budget at the work session in November. And then we'll have a special meeting, I think it's on the thirtieth of November?
Thirtieth, yep.
Where we'll do nothing but talk about the budget, same as we've done in the past. It'll be a work session. So we're kind of tied up at the moment, Larry.
And remember, it's a twenty-year plan. We don't have to do everything the very first day.
Although we're some high priority.
It took us six months to get here. We don't have to go running into this thing because it's less than thirty days old. I know it's your pet thing, but, you know, it just got passed. Room wasn't built today and neither was Bella Vista. Give them a break.
It's been, and some of those have been outstanding issues for well over a, a year or more, notwithstanding the fact that it's in the comprehensive plan. So I would assume that work is happening in the backgrounds to get some of those addressed.
We'll get to it when we can, Larry. We've gotta get other things done first. All right, everybody. Thanks for your participation. We'll see you next Monday. Good night.
Thank you.